We leave you everyone. Going to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsburg Planning Commission, June 14th, meeting to order. Would all please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone in the audience who can't hear, need to run to the commissioners, please get the high sign, try to speak loudly. First order of business is to take the roll call. And I see Holly Babb.
Here.
Robert Kolkowski here. Erin Lemon Smith.
Here.
Ron McConroe.
Here.
Alan Needham. William Rice here. Elizabeth Burke. Mark Drake. Gary Lundgren. Okay, so we have the requisite number of regular commissioners full seat, so we do not need to appoint any alternates. On to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the May 10th, 2016 meeting. Mr. Kolkowski, can you lead us through that, please?
Yes. You've all received the, looked at the edits by Mr. Rice, what he agreed to add. Does anybody else have any other edits, other than what Mr. Rice has proposed?
And the reason I'm doing it like this is a number of changes to the names and addresses of people that spoke at the last meeting, and they're very numerous. Rather than go through each one and have our clerk try to write those down, I conferred with the commissioners, and they've all agreed that my edits are correct. So Janice, I'll just submit this to you.
I'll take the motion to accept the minutes edited by Mr. Rice. Check. We have the motion. So move. Round motion. No, I said I'll let him answer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Please don't judge. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kolkowski. The next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for application number 16-01, Mantua Fine Properties LLC, agent Royce Palmer, owner, for a 23 lot affordable housing subdivision under CGS 8-3G, on the property located at 80 Climax Road, access map D20, block 608, block 001, Zone R40. I have been, I have received a memorandum from Mr. Rabbit indicating applicant's desire to not present any material or respond to questions tonight, so they have more time to address town staff comments and the comments made by the commission and members of the public on the May 10th meeting. So Mr. Rabbit, do you want to elaborate on that at all?
Just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, we were in pursuit of a letter dated June 10, 2016, from Lou Wise, who was the applicant's legal counsel, addressed to the planning commission and copied to me as the director of planning and community development. Again, as you mentioned, the applicant has requested the public hearing be opened this evening and continue to adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting on June 28th. They feel that that would give them adequate time to address staff's comments, both from planning, engineering, WPCA, Public Works, and Fire March, and then the time on the meeting. With that, they also agreed to a 35 day extension of time within which to close the public hearing. By this letter, the applicant consents to an extension and additional 30 days to close the hearing. The applicant previously requested 35 day extension. With this additional 30 days, that will bring you to the statutory maximum of 65 days, which will give you a total of 100 days to close the hearing. So you have sufficient time to continue this hearing to June 28th meeting. I will point out that we do not have access to Eno Hall on the 28th, so if you continue the hearing, we will be continuing the hearing to the main meeting hall and the town hall.
Did everyone hear that?
No.
Hi. Again, I might paraphrase what I stated. We have a letter from the applicant's legal counsel requesting that the public hearing be opened and continue to June 28th. That is within the applicant's rights and also within the rights of the commission to act on the request to continue the hearing for the 28th. The hearing would again be an opportunity for the public, as well as the applicant, as well as any interveners, to provide testimony, both oral and written, at that time. Mentioned to the commission on the June 28th, we do not have access to Eno Hall. If the commission continues this hearing, it would be staff's recommendation that it be continued to the town hall, main meeting room. We also do not have access to the light, which is perhaps the largest space we have available. If we continue on into July, we have access to all the larger rooms. Also, Mr. Chairman, as a follow up, I've had discussions with the abutting neighbors' council with regards to intervener status, and they are comfortable if the commission establishes that decision on the intervener status until the 28th meeting. Mr. Casey, his counsel, is here tonight. I misspoke, I'm sure you will be right.
So as a possibility of tabling petition that the intervener submitted on May 10th?
Correct.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Just to confirm what Mr. Rabbit said, that that's okay, his counsel's option to see that this commission desires to make that decision in two weeks when the public hearing happens. Okay, thank you.
So we have a couple of decisions to make.
Can I ask a question, please? I'm just wondering...
Please come up to the podium and speak your name and address.
I'm Bonnie Roswell, I'm a real person, but I've done 26 times this drive, I've run a corner for the past 24 years, and passed a pair. I'm just wondering, is there some kind of amendment that this won't happen again in the future? What can you do as townspeople, as neighborhoods, that this is not going to continue forever and cost the town a lot of money? What's the answer?
So I'm not sure if you're trying to make public testimony, or you just have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, so when will we start to this happening again? Can you be more specific?
Okay, when people want to come in and all of a sudden, a builder wants to take what happened here first in, and make it into a somewhat, you know, neighborhood area, a lot of homes. How do we prevent this? How is, how can we protect our community to not have a neighborhood setting burst wide open to something that's turning into what's been going on here?
Well, currently, the Connecticut statute A3G sets forth requirements and ability of an applicant to put in an application like this.
I agree with that.
And there are certain conditions that need to be met, and there are also certain philosophies that can't be deeply, such as harming the environment, putting people at risk, things like that.
So I do feel like it's putting people at risk, because there is, the community, there's the neighborhood people that, there's women that jog with their children down the street, there's people that take their dog walking along the neighborhood. It's, you know, the traffic coming from Climax Road already is getting people cut through from 44 Bushacan Road. This would make it so much worse. It definitely puts people at risk.
Thank you. I should make it a little more clear, there will be a period for public comment. Let us get through these other two items, and then I'll invite people to speak if they want to. So I'd like to make a motion that continue the public hearing, leave it open.
Is my name?
Mr. Rabbit?
Before you make that, if you make that motion, and in a second, you have continued the hearing, we're not allowed to be allowed to take public testimony. Now, I think if the public's clear, the intent of the commission is to potentially make a motion to continue this hearing two weeks out, where everyone in this room would be, have the same opportunity they have this evening, come before the commission and speak or submit written testimony.
Well, this is, public hearing is open right now.
If you make a motion to continue it, it would be continued.
Right, that means it would stop as in that vote.
Yes. So the appropriate motion would come after this? If it is the intent of the chairman to seek new testimony this evening, the applicant's counsel is here, the neighborhood resident who's obtained counsel, they have one representative here, but their consulting team is also not here this evening, and it may be most appropriate to take public testimony when all the parties are present. Again, if someone feels it's germane to the subject matter to speak, I think you're within your rights to allow them. But again, if everyone can be patient and come back in two weeks, when all the parties are here...
I'll put it to the public audience. I would like to put it up for public comment, with the understanding that the applicant is not here, northern legal counsel, we have intervener attorney here. So just understand, comments you make tonight will be recorded in the record, but they may not be heard directly by the applicant. You will have an opportunity again on June 28th. Yes, sir.
Donald Shranklin, 11 Leavenwood Road. I'm a little concerned with the constant meetings that don't go anywhere. Is it possible to schedule a meeting after we know a person is going to be here with all the information he needs to say, rather than have to keep rescheduling this?
Well, this is a regularly scheduled meeting for planning commission. We would have met independent of the applicant's actions or presence. I understand that, you know, it takes a little bit of effort for people to come to the meeting, and it's a little maybe deflating when something like this happens, but everyone's, everything that's happened is on the up and up, so certainly try to minimize any unnecessary meetings.
I think that since people are not here, and you don't have anybody to, to tell, you know, to discuss that and what, I think you should adjourn this meeting and then reschedule it at the other time, when everybody can interact with one another. I don't think that many things are going to be really resolved, and I think everybody here can certainly come to one more meeting to get this thing done. I think that it's just a waste of time, so I think we ought to adjourn the meeting and then go back next time and have public comment.
Thank you. Mr. Rabbit?
Mr. Chairman, just one more point of clarity in Mr. Wise's letter, who represents the applicant. His request to extend the hearing is a request to allow them an opportunity to modify their plans, so they're in the process of changing their plans to address staff's comments, both from the planning director, engineering department, Public Works, WPC, Water pollution control authority, which is the WPCA, and the Fire March. So they are in the process of revising those plans. Our comments were rather lengthy in nature, and they needed the time to address those comments. So it is my understanding that the next public hearing, they intend to submit new plans associated with the proposed development. And that is their right as an applicant.
Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. On the 16 Climax Road, Simsburg, I won't be able to be here on the 28th, but I do want to have my comments noted for the record. And the reason I do want to add, I'm sympathetic to the point in terms of disclosures made, is that I know that this applicant is already now an appeal defendant, and if this petition is denied, it involves other accountability. And if we're limited to what we've said on the record, to the issues of like taking up an appeal, we just want to make clear that things that I've already said, and things that I wanted on the record today, will be on the record, because they're available if necessary. But I did want to point out that, I've been looking at the files this week, and it may well be that the applicant is taking some of this into account, and I'm sure that the intervener's attorneys are taking this into account too. But I just want to note that a week after our last meeting, the director of Public Works in Simsburg sent a letter to, it may be 17th, which picked up on a point that one of my neighbors brought up last evening, the question of snow rule. And I know that he's made it very clear in his letter, and I want to make sure the director reflects this, and has a look at it in the background, that in his view, this entire plan is exceedingly dangerous for removal of snow, it's very vague, remember from last meeting, the response of where we're going to put the snow, they circle three areas in this development, and I'll just pile that up here. The letter from the Department of Public Works makes it very clear that there's going to be snow coming in from all the driveways here, and they're all going to be restored because they're going to have very high mountains. And I understand that they're going to be moving the driveways out, and they can give us more space, but I think that concerns there are very real about moving the snow around, and a lot of emergency vehicles that are heading around. So I just want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to look at that, I know they'll be addressing it, but I think that's a real concern. The second thing that I mentioned the last time that I, I think we'll get to a little more, is this proposal, I know, I understand that when this comes to some kind of dispute and appeal, this body, the townsman, would be very limited in what you can do in dealing with the statute A3G. And ordinarily, it would be limited to the question of safety of the community, but I want to make sure that I'm clear, and saying to the record, that I am not convinced that the proposal for this property satisfies the threshold question, which is whether or not there's a real bona fide claim to affordable housing in their proposal. If you look at their proposal, and they've itemized a couple of different scenarios for affordable housing under the formula provided by the statute, they are contemplating that people who are at the 80% threshold of low income housing, are being able with, they've added, conflated it with 4.5 children in a house, and has three bedrooms, so they come up with a figure of an annual salary of $91,000. And they subtract from that what's in the formula provided by statute. But even in your own notes, you have noted, somebody in your file has noted, that they have understated the taxes for the town, they've understated by a substantial margin the utility costs. They indicated utility costs in this town, which includes, I imagine, heating and electricity of $125. I guarantee you, there's no link here that pays $125 a month. If you put in the real numbers, fair numbers, of what it costs to live in a house that they've constructed, it would give, I believe, a proposal for a house that would cost probably in the area of $160,000, not $200,000. Unless they come to the table with a realistic estimate of affordable housing, they don't get the benefit of the statute, and I think people are overlooking it. They have not come up with a credible bona fide claim to provide an affordable housing, their numbers are inflated, your own notes reflect that. I think that's something that you ought to overlook. The other point that I raised the last time, and I'm not sure it was completely clear, is that I contemplate that even if they reduce the houses to 20, which is what they're now proposing, and last time they came down to 15, they are not going to be able to make their money back unless they sell houses that are raped, they cannot sustain, which will leave us with vacant houses, or houses that they have to suffer much less than they're proposing. Either one of those propositions, they have not dealt with. I think that you're entitled to make them. Answer the question, what are they going to do if they cannot sell these houses and fill them? They'll be obliged. Will be the freight for that, they should not be coming back to the town and saying, "Oh, we tried, let us now sell all the houses for $500,000 instead of the rape or retirement." That shouldn't be what they're allowed to do. So I think there's some pledging going on, in credit questions that they've been dealing with, and I ask you to hold your feet in the fire.
Thank you.
I'll speak as my name, my name's Bob McGee, 11 Leavenwood Road. And I'm all for being polite, I'm, I want my boards and commissioners to treat everything fair. But please don't fail to recognize that I don't think the board is ready to continue. I mean, they've asked Mr. Rabbit, his brother, letter, and maybe the other side has agreed to it, apparently they have. But aren't they presuming that you may have wanted to have, or the townspeople, you may have wanted to have a full hearing tonight, and complete the matter? Now, I urge that the board consider saying denying their request, complete the record, allow all the people to speak, whoever they need to. I mean, the fact that they don't send a representative to come to protect their interests in this matter, I find just very unusual, very unusual, because if it's that different to them, they should be here, and why not? So I'm against this. I live off, I don't play with that bad end of Climax. I live off the first grade, remember, the first grade, I'm all bushy head. But it's, I consider this polite. I'm not sure the economic, the gentleman raises some extra issues, but I'm not sure the economics of it, or your products, whether this guy made money in this deal or not. Is, I think that you're concerned, Mr. Rabbit, probably directly made here, maybe not. But I just wonder how he's going to do it financially, but that's his business. But I just think that we should be looking to conclude this with him, and you're bringing him ahead. So you haven't agreed to continue this yet to our knowledge. He's presuming, or that, whatever the case may be, or presuming that you're going to do this, and maybe we've committed some roles here that I'm not aware of, maybe you or which, I'm not sure, prerogative, I guess. I think the more you consider that, let's move forward. I'm not sure, this guy's not being polite to me, nor to my, nor to my neighbor, question polite to me. Thank you.
Currently, 10 Leavenwood Road, I was about to get up and say that myself. He made a request that this be continued. He's not here, not in term, he made a request just in case the judge doesn't grant it, to have somebody there. They have a chance to do it, because they've had a month to do, to respond to whatever they wanted to do. They should have had somebody in here to make sure that it is, they're able to present in person their request for attendance. But I agree, I think this petition should be denied, this request should be denied. The other thing is, realistically, this is a great way to wear down the neighborhood. Keep coming back, coming back, coming back. You're all here, the last time they took a buddy of this caliber, and you were shutting down. Now, if that, this would stay a threat there, but they're going to keep coming back, hoping that less and less of us show up. So their ideas were worn down. Because truthfully, that's a tactic that's been used all the time. So I would urge the commission to deny their request. We're all ready to go. Council of Columbia agreed to a request, they're ready to go. So let's have a look.
Would anyone else like to make some comments? Yes, please.
Eight will submit, 44 Climax Road. I just wanted to ask, can we have a sign sheet available here, so that if two weeks from now, not everyone shows up, we'll know that we had representation from a lot of people? Maybe two weeks from now, there'll be more people that will show up, just to, you know, weigh the numbers.
Usually don't take attendance up in the public audience.
All right, or is there something we should do to email someone?
To what effect?
To say that, you know, we're against this, so that they know how many people are actually...
Mr. Rabbit?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the public hearing process, the public hearing process, you can submit oral or written testimony. That can be oral at the hearing, or written at the hearing, or up until the hearing closes. So the public always has an opportunity to write a letter to the commission on the subject matter, up until the hearing closes, is my understanding. And I've discussed this with council, 830G, always advise the commission, if there is a request, to extend the process, that you grant the request. It's part of the process, you wouldn't treat this any differently than if it wasn't four laps of duty, or two laps of duty, or a site plan, if you were with a plan in its own hands, combined commission. And that has been settled, or talked to you over 30 years. Do not cut the process short with regards to the administration of this application. But again, anyone can submit written testimony up until the hearing is closed, because the commission has to make a decision based on the public hearing record. So once it closes, even if the applicant sends staff something, we put it in an envelope, we seal it, we do not even need it. So again, you have the opportunity to address the commission, chair, through the department, we will receive it, stamp it as received, and put it a copy in the file. You will become part of the public hearing.
So everyone should email or something to the commission. Thank you.
So just to make it clear, email, should it come directly to me?
From my perspective, again, the townhouse is fairly hefty spam filter, a lot of things get quarantined. If you want to assure that we are going to receive the correspondence, my best advice to you is to bring the correspondence directly to our department. We have people there, they will stamp it in in front of you, you could even make a copy that you received it, and you can put it in the file. Internet is a wonderful thing, emails are a wonderful thing, but we can't confirm receipt of an email.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Holly King, 17 Climax Road. I fully agree with my neighbor, or my evidence, I don't know you. But my concern with this putting the hearing off, first of all, should be resolved, I think it's extraordinary because it's on the... I think it's extraordinary consensual, consensual of the people not to even be here to assume that they were going to get their way. I also just can't help having a very strong sense that the morbid delay this into the summer, when more people are away, the furloughs already stated they can't be here, nothing like reducing your comments, town folks, so that they can speak without having to hear from us. I think it's extraordinary consensual, rude, and arrogant. Thank you.
We're due.
Just finishing quickly. Um, just so you know, William Case, who was in Jerry McCorral, the opposing intervenor neighbor, in the microphone. You got the most part of William Case, who was in Jerry McCorral, all of the help, this property. I'm not a rock star, sorry, I'm not used to the, close to the microphone. But the commission would know that we're comfortable with the extension, we understand that applications are complicated, this is a particularly complicated application, that they get staff comments, that they should be given an opportunity to respond to that, that is part of the 830G application, that they, that they address all the health and safety issues. I think the town did an excellent job, very thorough job, the fire marshal, the water, the water control. And we also point out that we submitted a, Ed Lally, associate superintendent engineer reports, I believe you've been given a copy of that, and we managed to get that in June 6th, or the eight days before this hearing. So we would ask that you require the applicant to submit whatever changes or issue, however he's addressing, the staff comments and our comments, if he chooses to address those, so that the staff and we have time to respond to those. We set a very reasonable seven-day standard at the last year, and we'd ask that we continue that in response to the big possible, so that there is the time for the staff and for our experts to review that. We also did ask for a traffic study, at least that hasn't been submitted either. I would like to have a good opportunity to look at that, but I know there are some issues that are going to be resented with that. Well, we're trying to help the town, given it's work, to try to flush out these two issues here. This is a really potentially problematic application, that if it's built and approved, there's going to be a lot of health and safety issues that are not addressed by present plans, and I don't think can be overcome, or they haven't shown that they can overcome some of these serious problems. We think that's going to be the case. So like I said before, comfortable with the extension, welcome to the opportunity to have the information, and I think you'll respond to it for your end. Thank you.
That's a reasonable request. And we set the seven-day deadline on submission of the staff comments in an attempt to give the applicant sufficient time to respond. I think maybe the volume of the comments is a little more than they had expected, but to keep everything fair, I think they need to have their responses, if they have written responses, at least seven days before our next meeting, which gives up one more week. So in essence, we'll hold your feet to the fire to get their, their work done, so that we can review their responses, kind of staff can, and the intervenors as well.
This be the last, is the only thing they get? It'll be in the file?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, the commission has the ability under statute to keep the public hearing open for a maximum of 100 days.
From what date?
From the date the original hearing was opened, which was May 10.
So it's true.
Again, that is what the state statute says. It is a maximum timeframe. And to understand that you have to go through the due process part of any application, in fairness to the applicant as well as the commission. Again, your, your discussion, Mr. Chairman, regarding seven days, is you would like staff to inform the applicant that you appreciate that, and the viables plans were submitted seven days prior to the hearing, to give staff ample time to review.
So I think the commission...
And if they come in after that, you cannot prevent them.
We should.
So it's his request.
Yeah, good faith, after.
We will recount that.
Any other comments?
I'm sorry. It's okay. Sorry. Does it make sense, I, I, does it make sense to increase the timeframe so that the applicant has some time for the next hearing, usually two weeks, but I just think if you have those days, don't, don't you schedule? I know Terry Rice asked for those days, and it doesn't make sense to give the town's staff some time to review these plans, where it's going to be a common question after these.
Oh, well.
I know that will be disappointing to some of the commission, but it may make more sense, because I think in the next two weeks' time, there's going to be another request or an extension, and we're going to be here again.
Mr. Chairman, come ahead. Again, given the nature of the application and the volume of staff comments, that the applicant is doing their best to respond to those comments, setting the timeframe, and that's why I asked the question, it's in understanding that you would appreciate plans and your comments to staff as well as the commission seven days prior. But again, if they come in the night of the meeting, you have to receive them, and you would make a decision as a commission whether you receive them at close of the hearing. And if the hearing's closed, you still have access to staff, it's just you end the proceedings for the public and the applicant. I'm sure that if they cannot turn the plans around in that seven days in our time, they will perhaps be before you, two weeks from now, saying, "We submitted our plans, but we'd like you to keep the hearing open, because we're sure staff is going to have comments, and we would like to respond to staff's comment as well as any others of the public." This process has the ability, through state statute, to go 100 days. You don't meet in August, so you have two days in July, which are July 12th and 26th. So, you know, I'm looking at the 26th as being their last opportunity, if you're out of the balance of the meeting, for the hearing to close, because you do not have the statutory timeframe to go from June, July 26th to your September meeting. In fact, if the public hearing is closed on July 26th, you will have to make a decision at the end of September, your September meeting, your second month, you would have to make a decision. Once the public hearing closes, the commission has 65 days to render a decision. And in a potential scenario, all the extensions are potentially going to be used up during the public hearing. An applicant has the right to request 65 days' worth of extensions to be used at any point in time during the application process. So if you only use 60 during the public hearing process, that five could carry over to a decision.
So the applicant, the applicant has had a 30-day assumption under last meeting?
Thirty-five, I think.
Oh, it's 35 for the first time?
Excuse me, 35, yes.
Okay, so that's six, that's the 65.
Correct.
But if we close the public hearing prior to the total of 65 days...
They adjust their...
Add those in the...
Have those in the back.
Okay.
Go ahead, Holly.
I'm new to planning, so I would ask dumb questions. Everybody on this commission has a full-time job, and we do a lot of engineering ourselves. I work on many engineering projects. I, what are the ramifications if we don't extend this? My customers don't always do that, even if I'm allowed to ask for it, they might tell me to go fly. I mean, what are the, what are the negative ramifications?
From my experience, under an 830G application process, it is not in the best interest of a commission and or the applicant to not work in a cooperative manner under the maximum timeframe to allow under statute.
But I don't see that they're working in a cooperative manner. We asked several questions at the last meeting, and I only saw one of them addressed in the meantime.
They have rights, they have, technically, you need to follow the process, but if you don't jump out. In my view of the answer to your question, I would be extremely sure, I would be extremely sure sided on the commission's behalf, not continuing this.
Could you explain what the ramifications is?
With regards to future litigation.
Oh, because it could litigate.
Any decision of a commission can be litigated by the applicant or someone who has standing in a court of law.
But is this considered cooperative if I'm witnessing nothing of substance from them in 60 and 30 days?
You haven't seen anything of substance from them in 30 days. We met with them a week after the last hearing, so they've been working on the plans for the last two or three weeks. We had a substantial amount of all comments that required them to re-engineer and re-survey on the site to address staff's comments. This wasn't a draft meeting, this was more fieldwork and associated engineering to coincide with the initial fieldwork in the interim. Again, I've, I've been through the 832 process before, I've been through many subdivisions over one tenure, and, you know, I, I can't recall an instance where a commission in council, who legal, has not advised a commission to follow through on the process and allow the extension. The reverse is, you're at the 65th day, and you need another week, it's up to the applicant to consent for that extension. You, in good faith, would appreciate him to consent for that extension and give you one more meeting. It's reciprocal, of all applicants. Again, I don't think it is beneficial to the commission to make a decision not to extend this hearing, and actually could be detrimental to the process.
Any other comments from the public? So we heard quite a bit of words tonight, showing that there's two things to address. First is the continuation of the public hearing. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing with the full understanding that we expect cooperation from the applicant, and we're not trying to drag out the process, but rather have the process work as it's intended to. There were a lot of comments that they needed to address, and Holly, you're right, I can see, let's say, specific comments or responses to some of the comments that the commissioners had. I'm hopeful that that is forthcoming, so...
In all fairness, to this town of Simmsberry, you are village with staff, the town essentially made quite a bit of work out, quite a bit.
So I make a motion to continue the public hearing until Tuesday, June 28th, 2016, and, yeah, maybe we'll have a seven o'clock town hall, so that's, in essence, granting the extension that the applicant has. I'll start then. Any discussion? All in favor, if they say aye.
Well, I do want to say, because I appreciate the comments that people made, it would have been nice to have a person live here, and I do hear what you're saying about this, and so I just want to go on with your saying, I, I hear what you're saying about them not being here, and I understand how people feel that's a bit arrogant, and that they just think it's, it was a done deal, but I really want to say that I, I listen to your comments. I'm struggling with, I don't want to do anything that might enter this and get us into worse difficulty, but I just want to go on record saying, I appreciate your comments, and I completely understand why you feel that way, and I struggle with making this vote, but I, but I'm also trying to think of the larger picture, and I just want to be sure everybody has the due diligence and that we do this the right way, so that we're not dragged into court, and then we get into big trouble. I just want to go on with yours.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Any extensions?
Yes.
Okay, so we had five ayes, we want an extension. Holly, no say. Five, five ayes. One ayes. Okay, so we also need to address the intervenor's petition. Heard from their council, where they had no opposition to us taking this up at the next meeting, so I would move that to the table, the intervenor's petition vote until the next meeting on June 28th, 2016. Any discussion on the intervenor's petition, staff? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Any extensions? None, this is gay. Okay, so the, uh, public hearing will be continued June 28th, 7 p.m., town hall, 10:00. So are persons with this application for tonight, this completely? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I guess you...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. What order, Mr. Chairman?
That's nothing to do with the issue that you just...
You do not have to work on them like that.
No, this is just, it's more popular.
They have their numbers, they have a set agenda, they're not going to do a lot of stuff. Staff will be available, they have a class meeting.
There's definitely a couple of things.
No, I'm not going to do that.
Some substantive, you're coming? As a matter of fact, this, I make a motion to amend the agenda to...
I see.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Extensions? Any...
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, this testimony can have no correlation, no relationship to any application before you this evening.
Right. Yeah. It does not, it does not, and I appreciate your, your caution, it needs to be in service there. I appreciate the courtesy, Mr. Rice, as your town father, and if you're chairman and board committee in this town. And my point is, two things, communication. I guess everybody can hear you, but we're the fragiles old building, don't lead it to the top. But the acoustics, you're a very soft-spoken man, Mr. Rabbit. I'm sitting about 20 feet away from you, and I am screaming, maybe with a big roller, but I'm screaming, and I can see that here too. We should not be having, the town should be investing $500, $100, with the proper, my own part of people. It's very difficult here, it really is. I don't want to get Mr. Rabbit in trouble, but I have repeatedly, and he's shown his skill here, I have repeatedly complained to both Mary Blaschke and now Lori, favorite, Lori, please, please, about our town's website. It stinks in terms of communication, and as a town father, I think you should look her in the eye and say, "Let's improve our town website." If I'm going to send an email to you with your confidence, Mr. Rabbit, I can't do it. Yet I didn't want to keep you involved in anything that get me here, because you're the brains. I shouldn't say that, not much like you do, but he's experienced, he's a professional, you're a volunteer, this paper's one wonderfully, but let's communicate better, both in terms of microphones and email access. Thank you so much, and I really do appreciate all of you. Thank you. Okay, no, no, we should do applications, no referrals. We have an item on the agenda about commission education workshop, and Mr. Rabbit and I have discussed this, and since many of the subjects that were laid discussed might pertain to current applications, we decided to not do that, even though we've tried not to superimpose it on the current application. Even though we've tried not to superimpose it on current applications, it's probably in it, so we're going to take that off. I'm walking along to the right of the table. So, yeah, I move to amend the agenda to strike the commission education workshop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any extensions? Repose?
No, I would go second.
Oh, okay. Close your hands. Okay, is there, I can give you that you can report to us on with the P O C D update, request for qualifications?
P O C D update, we released it a little over a week ago. I was in Detroit at a conference, and we released it just before I left, I would say perhaps a week ago this past Friday. We did an R F Q, request for qualifications, and there we have placing structure, it's mostly what is your firm charged, what is your experience. The R F Q process on a large project in a community like Simsbury could do you a big service. For my goal, I have sufficient amount of funds within the department's budget to undertake a reasonable, successful plan of construction in a condensed amount of time, you know, fourteen to sixty months to accomplish this, and you too, with your assistance, have the best qualified consulting team onboard to accomplish that task. And we have built a structure into our budget to accommodate that. So we released that, and it's on our county webpage, it's also on the Connecticut Association of American Planners, C C A P A, it's on our website at R F Q. All of the planners and consulting firms in Connecticut that do R F Qs for P O C Ds will look at that one. We did not advertise it in the Harvard card, planner document, meaning legal ads in the Harvard card, or, you know, most of the bigger firms have search engines that they subscribe to that call the R F Qs, but I'm concerned you should get twenty-four bids, you already have one firm sent correspondence with their intent to sell it.
Can I ask a question? In my field of engineering, a lot of time, a lot of time is spent reinventing the wheel when a different consulting firm takes up the work of a previous consulting firm. Is there any intent to contact the people who did the last P O C D and, for continuity, invite them to?
The consultant, there are two private firms in Connecticut that do the O C Ds, I believe both of them are aware that Simsbury has put in R F Q. But we are, I am not individually targeted in making phone calls to specific consultants.
I'm not sure you really can, that's the problem.
I'm likely to say.
Yeah, you really can't. You can't, because it would show deferential treatment. So you can't go to a company that did it before, you put it out, you can't have that arrow, and having to R F Ps and reviews and writing contracts for the state, I mean, it has to be like up and up, so you really couldn't do that.
Oh, I was just trying to not calling it the up and up, I was just calling it.
You can't. It's not a good, but it's not because.
The public sector is very different.
It's the private sector.
It happens to work in both.
It seems, mine is more fiction, and usually you get better results because you have a lot of.
When I have my private sector, I am allowed to call, it's almost directly asked for places.
Even that's changing. Ethics and integrity rules in the private sector, they're much more strategic.
Wait, wait, no, I, believe me, I don't know about anybody here, but every single quarter has to go through a captain's exam, like I do in my business, so I know, but I'm very strict with ethics. I don't think it's unethical, I think it's actually what we would call best practices, but evidently I don't understand the public sector.
On the public side, for planners, C C A P A, which is the planners or national organization that's connected with this, is the element, the actual, it's, you know, never mind the cost of the Harvard card, it's on our webpage, it's on C C A P A's.
I don't think there's any.
What do you expect to get responses?
I think my deadline is towards the end of June, potential editing, July, selection and negotiations, end of July, selection, someone onboard, we can't pause. Being conscientious, a lot of people give in, not any time, have perhaps made arrangements in August at the commission level to make a decision. I, when we have the referrals or work with the chairman, I'm betting those, no one wants to have a staff or the chairman, or have a small supplement, to any cost.
Good, thanks for the update.
If we have a prospective person, I will bring them for you, so you know the four of them before a contract.
We have until the, when until when?
November twenty-seventh.
Oh, okay.
But you have to have like sixty-five days. Prior to the adoption, you have to have a file with the county, and on the web page, sixty-five days, really something.
September, two days, which is.
That's fourteen months.
Yeah.
Towns have, towns have been known to go longer. If you go longer, and your P O C D is out of date, on any discretionary funding you submit, that request of O P A, you have to submit a letter. One letter is pending compliance with the requirements of state statute associated with your current P O C D. The other letter is, "I am not." Now, there is a waiver provision, and you can say, "I am not, but," and two months away, versus, "I am not funded," it's only a minute, it's not a time. I'm involved in this, how to assure the, asking for a waiver, and it's only a waiver for the last one. But on occasion, there are grants available that come up quickly, and I don't want to put Simsbury in that position to not. Again, there is the potential for a little bit of slippage, given the.
Well, let's keep our eye on the ball, and I don't want to play for slippage. Okay, that's the end of our agenda. Any, any new, any correspondence, Mr. Chairman?
No correspondence.
See, I make a motion.
Um, can I, I just want to ask a question about the litigation, because they're talking about the litigation, can anybody tell us? Okay. If we can discuss what we want.
We have certain things that we don't discuss.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm making a motion to adjourn the second.
Any discussion?
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.